...that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners may indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedures that we follow tonight will include the board, which will hear items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. At that time, the person will merely have to state their name and the address in which they reside in the city of Troy. At that time, the speaker will state whether they are in favor or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table, meaning will delay, the request. We would only delay a request frankly if we needed more information. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court.
At this point, I'm going to move forward with Agenda Item 1, roll call. Paul, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
President.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
Agenda Item 2, approval of minutes for the July 17, 2012 meeting. I note, we did not have a meeting in August because we had no issues brought before the board or before the city. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments regarding the minutes as they currently have been written?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the minutes as presented.
Move a second for Mr. Stratt. Paul, can you call the roll for approval?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik.
Yes.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. This is directed towards the board. Is there any questions or comments regarding the agenda or any last-minute additions? Seeing none, we're going to move on into the hearing of cases. Item number four, Item Number 4A is a request for variance. And I would like, Paul, if you could give us a workup on this, on this, or a presentation of the facts as we know it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property of this variance is located on Rochester Road specifically at 3424 Rochester. That property is located on the east side of Rochester, south of Waddles and north of Big Beaver. In the overhead on the screen is the red box, in the middle of the red circle. The subject property carries a general business classification, zoning classification, as does the property to the north and the northwest. And the property to the south and also to the west also carries a business zoning classification. The property to the east in yellow carries a single-family residential zoning classification. The subject matter of tonight's request involves a proposed addition to the existing office building. Now, in this drawing, Rochester Road is to the left, and the white area in the middle of the drawing is the existing building. Now, what they're proposing are two additions. The first is towards Rochester Road or the front of the building, and that's indicated in this grayed-out area here. The zoning ordinance requires that this addition be at least 10 feet back from the Rochester Road property line. Portions of the building are proposed to be only four feet back. So that's the first variance request that they're asking for tonight. Now, they also want to add on to the rear of the building, which is over here on the right side of the drawing. And the zoning ordinance requires that this addition be set back at least 75 feet from the rear property line. And that provision is in the zoning ordinance because the property to the east is zoned single-family residential. The addition is proposed to be 10 feet back, so they need a 65-foot setback variance. So those are the two variances that the applicant is requesting from the board here tonight.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present, our designated representatives? Could you please come forward? And as a reminder, we'll just need you to state who you are, and then you're free to make a presentation as you see fit to support your request.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert Rollinger. I'm an attorney in Farmington Hills, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the petitioner who is here with me tonight to answer any other questions that I frankly can't answer. And I'd like to review the situation that has presented itself to my client. The applicant is seeking these zoning variances because the principal use of the building is for financial services, I would call it. Mr. McHale is a certified public accountant. He does tax preparation, financial reporting, quarterly tax returns, and he has to maintain record retention requirements that the Internal Revenue Service does require of every certified public accountant. He's been in this building now for 13 years, and he simply frankly has run out of space. The building is, the configuration and footprint of the building does not allow any more physical space for him to be able to maintain the amount of record-keeping that he has to do in order to satisfy the requirements of the IRS. And so he's had to figure out a way to deal with those realities. He also, at the present time, has one multi-use bathroom facility, which is a unisex bathroom for both his employees and for customers and clients. He'd like to obviously enhance that and have separate lavatory facilities for men and women, which are ADA compliant and building code compliant. And in order to do that as well, he needs to also expand the existing size of the building. Thirdly, the computer facilities that he has for his business operation candidly are sitting on top of storage boxes of client records at this time, which is not a very good situation. The server is in one place, the hardware is somewhere else. It needs to be in a separate server area so it's not near the record retention area and is in a separate building facility so it can be protected from the elements and totally separated from the record retention area. Last but not least is, he would like to have an area frankly for his employees to have lunch. Right now, there's an area that's probably the size of the podium that I am standing at that they have to use. It's got a small refrigerated area. I'm trying to recall, and a microwave oven, and a chair, and that's it. And there are about six, seven people working in that facility, and he'd like to at least have some decent space so that they can have lunch in peace. So those are the activities that draw him to seek the two zoning variances from the board. The size and footprint of the building does not allow these things to be done and allow that building to be functional as it is currently configured. So he is looking at adding on to the front and looking at adding on in the back. Also, the building does have a joint grant of easement. It has a driveway access easement with the building lying to the north, which allows ingress and egress into and out of Rochester Road so that his clients and his employees can safely park. We have obtained, and I believe, I did try to get to Mr. Evans in advance of the meeting, we have contacted each of the rear neighbors who are residential neighbors, and I have copies of the letter that each of the residential neighbors signed at 1079 Winthrop in favor of the proposed building expansion plan, at 1071 Winthrop, and at 1063 Winthrop. All three residential property owners who are lying directly to the east of 3424. If I might read what the letter says so the board members would be aware of it. "I own the single-family residence located at 1079 Winthrop in Troy, Michigan. I've been advised by Mr. Megan McHale, a certified public accountant, as to his proposed building expansion plans for the property at 3424 Rochester Road in Troy, Michigan. I am familiar with Mr. McHale's proposed building expansion and the reasons for requesting the two zoning variances from the City of Troy Zoning Board of Appeals. This is to advise that I have discussed Mr. McHale's expansion plans and his request for the two zoning variances, and that I have no objection to what Mr. McHale is intending to construct on his property, and I have no objection to the requested variances being granted." And again, that's the same letter from all of the three property owners. I'd also indicate that my client has also, in the event of a parking issue, which I can tell you, that when he first moved into this property, there was also a barbershop facility operating, I believe it's called, or was called, Nino's Barbershop. So he had, Nino had three barber shop chairs. He had three customers, and he usually had possibly up to three more customers waiting to have their hair cut. So we had at least nine people in the building with his accounting service. There was never, ever, an issue with parking, ever. They never had a problem at all. But again, to be on the safe side, the property owner to the south, which owns and operates a Sunoco gasoline service station, has also been contacted, and we have also a letter from them indicating their approval and consent to the requested two separate zoning variances. Again, I don't know if this got to the members of the zoning board, but again, I do have a letter from them as well.
I can only speak for myself, but I know I had received some additional documentation, I believe we all had, but after your presentation is over, if for some reason one of us don't have it, we'll make sure that they all read it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Again, I just wanted to make sure of that. Also, I can also tell you that at least one of the tenants in the building that's immediately north of 3424 Rochester Road, I believe it's 3480, which is a store owned, sorry, store owner is called Check &amp; Gold, and that party also signed a letter, which I believe was also provided to each of the members of the zoning board, indicating they have no objection as well to the two separate zoning variances being sought. Again, practical difficulty, the footprint doesn't, there's just not enough physical space in the existing footprint to be able to provide room for the server, have an adequate record retention area to satisfy the IRS, build an ADA compliant bathroom facility for both male and female employees and clients, and frankly, to have a lunchroom area so that they have a place to eat. There is, I do have a drawing, which I believe-
We have.
-was also furnished to each of you as well.
Thank you for the presentation, sir. And before you sit down, what we're going to do is give the board a chance to inquire directly with you or the property owner, if you need him to come up, to ask any questions. I have two quick, small questions. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, you're welcome to.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
If I could just request to the, Mr. Rollinger, could you just raise the microphone a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Certainly.
The only questions I have is, and it's just from my knowledge, is regarding the IRS requirement for documentation storage, does that have to, is there any requirement that it has to be on-site where you conduct your business?
Actually, I took a lot of-
Oh, sir, if you actually, just because we, that one, yeah, that one works.
I have a lot of boxes already in my home in Troy, in the main basement, and it's incredible amount of boxes we have. And my wife here, she can satisfy for that.
Okay.
But that's why we're trying to computerize stuff, but at least we have on hand at least about 30 bucks, has to be current, actual document, which is a current, at least two years of document. The stuff, the prior stuff, we're trying to scan it so far, but at least 30 bucks. I can't really do this, you know, at home, it's getting an issue for-
I understand. So in other words, from usability, you need to have two years of records?
On the site.
Okay. The other question I have regarding the ADA requirements for the bathrooms, has there been any citation, statement of any direction from the city as part of Bass Building inspections in which they've raised that issue with you?
The current building, it's compliance with the old code, all of it. Even the back area is not 65, like the variance require, only actually require 20 feet variance. Why? Because we already existed variance under the 1987 code.
Right.
So only 20 feet.
So there's been nothing that's been brought to your attention at the city level?
Nothing. Even the current bathroom is 87, but we, everything on the building, the city code will upgrade it to the current laws and codes.
Understand. Okay. Thank you for entertaining my questions. I'd like to open this open to the zoning board for questions as they pertain to, that you may have for these gentlemen. Is there any question?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clark?
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I think one is more a process question to Mr. Evans while these gentlemen are here. Mr. Evans, the letters that the gentleman referred to, are you confident that you have copies of that, and what is the procedure?
I know we don't have some of them, so before they leave the dais, they should submit the-
Sure. I was just concerned because anyone can claim to have a letter from anyone-
We'll get those in the file.
I'm not saying that this gentleman would ever do that, but it's nice to have a hard copy for the board to review at any time. Really, a couple of questions. I'm looking here through, you know, this is a pretty lengthy paper trail for us to look through, and I appreciate all your easy verbiage here for us to download. Regarding the square footage, I don't see that in here. I understand the variance requests are for, you know, so many feet from what the city currently requires. What is the increase in square footage that you are requesting, or that these variance requests would allow you to build-
Sure.
-based on your plans?
The front, I'm sorry, the front area in, on the, what I would call the Rochester roadside would be approximately 800 square feet. Similarly, the additional area in the back would be approximately the same 800 square feet, so we're looking at about 1,600 square feet.
Okay. That's helpful. So it's about 1,600 square feet. The reason I, you know, I reviewed all the material before I came to the board meeting, and then something caught me just while I was sitting here waiting for the meeting to begin, but I think it's on page 27, under recitals, where you state that this proposal that you're asking to undertake with our approval is a minor expansion of the building. So 1,600 square feet to me would be not minor. And it's not a big building to begin with, but your expansion of 1,600 feet is larger than my home here in Troy.
Oh.
And so, I mean, everything's relative, I guess, based on what you're starting off with, but I find that to be a little bit out of sorts there. And then the other question I have is of the gentleman here, the owner of the business. So you're required to have two years of your paper records on-site, and you have things in storage at home, but what percentage of the 1,600-square-foot expansion of the building would be dedicated to files that are required under the IRS if you're to be-
I'm sorry, can we get the plans detailed? Do we have like a detail of the inside?
There should be, yeah.
Do you want me to show the floor plan?
Floor plan.
Yeah, the floor plan.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I can do that?
So in the floor plan, we show the back area will be divided to three parts. The one part is going to be rail storage, you know those files on railing that move on railing, like doctor offices and stuff?
Sure.
So this, we're going to take the big portion of the back. The middle portion, the middle portion of the, okay, great. So the back area, so the right corner, you have, I can, if I have pointer, I will, I can, I can point, but the corner in the back, yeah, this one, this is, is going to be installed a rail filing cabinet, metal that moves, so it'd be compact and very durable for our use. Why, we might know why we need to keep at least two or three years, because some issue arise, some correspondence come from all government agents, IRS estate, we need to go get in file, get copy under correspondence to those issues. So we don't want to go to storage area or my home deck for those files. So this will be installed, this railing for the, the middle portion in the middle, this will be an open space for lunch area for staff in the middle, in the back. Yeah. This is a lunch area only, it's still small, but it's very reasonable for them to have privacy while they're eating. This one. And then to the left area, this is going to be office used, it's not additional staff or anything, just an office space, we did not designate it. If you would like to go to the upper area that we're going to go increase in the front? Oh, we can, of course, in the middle area, there is a utility room to the right, to the right of the middle area, yes. No, yeah, down a little bit. There's electric, and this is the utility room, where you're going to put the server and the router and the cabling and all this stuff. And also, if you go down, this is a bathroom, two bathrooms back-to-back, and you go down to the extension, this is my office would be, which is already a half office. And to the left of that, this second office, it's very important. Why? Sometimes in my office, I work in documents related to the client. I don't want anybody walk on me, and I open all the documents in front of all people to tell him, that's privacy issue. So the second office would be used for both of us, me and the staff, for confidential, quick, like if somebody walk in, I don't want to meet in my room, I will meet him. So this both second office. And this is the plans here, and there are receptions, and that's it.
Yeah. Chairman.
Pardon me.
I, I-
Just one moment, sir. Do you have something to add to?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that some of the, some of the physical facilities are already present. In other words, we are looking, what you're seeing is what is there today and what we want to do. So the reception area is already there. Mr. McHale's office is all, these are already there.
Understood. Mr. Stratt, before I recognize you, Mr. Courtney-
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On that same note, another question.
No, no, please continue then, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. So I guess, after reviewing your documents and then hearing what you had to say here about the floor plan, really, I mean, you do your business better than anybody else can do your business because you understand your business, and I don't. But what I'm seeing here, or seeing here is that regarding the need for files on-site, that's a very small part of the overall expansion. It's not, it's not this whole back 800 feet or whatever it was, is not files are required and so forth. That's, that's my only, and if you have anything to say about that.
You're right about this, but like Mr. Wrong introduced, this is, it's not, it's not all about storage and IRS requirement, this also about second staff. We have ladies working for us. They need a separate restroom to use. The only restroom we have in the lobby. If somebody want to go to walk to the restroom, or they have to walk in front of all the client, if somebody's sitting, there is no private issue. This is a major issue we have. So we adding two additional bathrooms and also lunch area, like he, Mr. Wrong introduces. And the second office is very important for our business. We don't have this second office. Everybody have it, lawyer, attorneys, or somebody like that.
Thank you for the information. I think we understand that the expansion serves multiple purposes, not only, some of it, if you would, a wish to improve your operations in addition to storage. Do you have something else? Okay. Mr. Courtney?
Yes. You do mention that this 1,600-foot expansion is minor, but if I remember when I've been there a long time ago in the barber shop, and I look at the entire building, I don't think it's 1,600 feet now.
No.
You're doubling the size. It's not a minor increase, it's a major.
Mr. Courtney and such, I think if the plans are correct, I think it's what's, is it 600?
It's less than 1,600. It should be less, because in the front, one more thing I want to bring to your attention, that the six-foot in the front, it's not really a whole across.
I understand, sir, but to understand, essentially what you're proposing to do is double the size of the building, I mean, just for layman's purposes. You pretty much need, you need that, use what your claim is to operate your business. So you want to grow the building by-
Correct.
Two. Okay. Let's just make sure everybody understands. Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, then my other question is, have you looked at other sites that are more suitable and already constructed?
That's a good question. This space, I've been in Troy all my life. I was in, started my business in 1996 in O'Reilly Building, if you remember, Mr. Courtney. This building, I was in second floor, I started over there, I used to work for, I was a senior auditor in Wayne County, I start my business in the evening. And I moved to this building, we have Nino, as you know, maybe. He has, I joined Nino. Nino taken a big space, was a big strip, three barber shop, sitting, they're cutting hair, three people on the chair and three people waiting, plus my operation. We never have an issue with parking or expansion or anything. This will be improving, not the quality.
Just a minute, a moment, sir. I think, I appreciate the information you gave as a background, but as far as in answering Mr. Courtney's question, which I think is really is, is because of the need for space, have you considered other options inside, you know, at another building? And I'm not sure if that's been spoken to you.
Cost-wise, it will be humongous for us. If you look at to buy another building in the city of Troy currently, it's not visible. Plus, we are known in this area for many, many years, it will harm our business badly.
Okay.
And also, we need to keep doing business in the city of Troy. I could locate to different cities, south or east.
Okay. I understand. Mr. Courtney, is there anything as a follow-up? Mr. Stratt, you had something?
Yeah. I, I think the real question here that you're asking for, or what you are asking for as far as a variance, my understanding is that you are in need of additional space. If not, you're going to have to move to another location. So it's a hardship as it relates to your need as it exists right now. In order to accomplish that, the site constraints are of such that you must seek a variance in order to accomplish that. I don't care about your operation, I understand your operation, I don't think that's our privilege, to be honest with you. I think that is the, the whole basis of what you are saying, is you need this in order to stay in the city of Troy.
Yes, sir.
And that's your whole operation, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I don't want any more discussion on it.
Thank you, sir.
I think that is the issue that we are really at hand, and that's the only issue that we can really vote on. But I guess the others have concern as it relates to your operation, et cetera. I'm not really concerned with that. I just wanted to make that clear.
One question I have for, for either one of you would like to speak to it, and I don't know where, and my question about the room for storage space and regulation requirements, I know sometimes hamstring a business owner of what you need. Hence, that was my question. I have to say that what you've presented here to me, and this is the quick background of my question, is that it's a bit of a wish list. In other words, there's things you would like to do versus what maybe you need to do. And I'm not sure if you're prepared to speak to this tonight, but if you had to increase the size of the building and get a variance that allowed you to operate successfully, what is it that you have to do versus what you want to do? Because I think there's a bit of both here.
Honestly, Mr. Chairman, this is exactly what I wish and it should be for operation like me. Why? Because we did not add gym room. You know, nowadays, we should add gym room, but we didn't. We did not add recreation. All we did, lunch, a storage, computer room. Mr. Wrong saw the computer in the-
Well, I understand what you're saying, sir, and I don't-
So everything, it's fit in place. So everything, it's fit in place, really.
I understand, I understand how your design is integrated, but I believe you used the words should and wish.
No, no, I apologize for this.
You know, but I'm really, what we really need to know, because when we have to grant a variance...
I apologize for should. This is exactly what my operation require.
Okay, okay.
To be...
You're saying this is what you need in order to make your business work? All right, all right.
Not should, I apologize.
No, no, it's all, I just wanna, you understand the question I was asking, is sometimes people want to, to, to add in extra items that they would like to have versus what they absolutely have to have? And, and for us, we need to understand, especially if we're gonna grant a variance. So, and sir, you had something to follow up?
Yeah, I was gonna just, just add to that. I mean, I, having been on site and witnessed the operation, there are female employees, there are male employees, there are female customers, there are male customers. The bathroom facility situation frankly isn't, it isn't fair. It's a, it's, it's a definite issue because you have male employees and female employees and male and female customers coming in for accounting services, and right now, there isn't enough lavatory facilities for them.
Understood, we understand. Is there anyone else with the board who has a question or a follow up question at this point? Mr. Bartnik?
Yes, this is either to the city staff or to the, this is either to the city staff or to the petitioner. What was the number, what were the number of feet that were taken at the widening of Rochester Road from the frontage?
A lot. For expansion?
For the expansion of Rochester Road?
We cooperated fully, sir. So we give you whatever you need, we did not discuss. And we have two years of hardship because of the construction. We did not raise the issue. Believe me, it was very tough couple of years, but we never have issue cooperating fully with the city of Troy. It's about thirty feet, thirty plus. I'm not sure exactly. Thirty-one, thirty-two, something like that.
Three zero or more, thirty or more feet?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes. Isn't the building line set by the line for Rochester Road even though it isn't there? Wasn't that true before?
You're asking...
In other words, what I'm trying to find out is, I don't think the taking of Rochester Road had any effect on the amount of variance he needs.
Well, the former zoning ordinance did say that we would measure required setbacks in the front from the proposed right of way, not the actual right of way.
Yeah.
So as far as I can recall, or for at least for some time, at least five years, I know the proposed right of way for Rochester Road was at least a hundred and fifty feet total. So even if the road edge wasn't, didn't utilize all that right of way, we would still require new construction to be setback from that line.
So, Mr. Evans, to clarify, the, he built, or a proposed line for Rochester Road is what was expanded to when we did the expansion, when the city did the expansion?
Oh, yes.
In other words, there is no, there is no need to discuss about...
Existing and proposed?
Yeah.
Right. Right now, the site plan that we're looking at now shows the, the final right of way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Courtney, anything more?
No, what I was really saying is that he still needed the setback variance before as well as after, it didn't.
Okay.
That, the Rochester Road didn't change that.
Understood. Are there any, Mr. Bartnik?
Well, my question, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my question does relate to that because the, the problem has arisen before the board earlier with regard to the car wash or the auto wash. One of the reasons why the auto wash had to make a change or come before us for, for variance was because of the change in the roadway. So I'm asking a similar question with regard to this piece of property, is one of the reasons that the petitioners are requesting a variance is because of the, some change that may have affected by virtue of the condemnation of Rochester Road?
I don't know if I...
Do we know the answer to that?
I don't know if, I, I don't have the answer, no.
Does the petitioner care to comment on that? If, if there's any knowledge?
Yeah, if you have some knowledge, I would, would appreciate if you could provide it.
I think our situation is very similar to our one. Why? Because, but he raised the issue, we didn't raise it. When I submit the plan, this really, I don't wanna take advantage of anything the city did. But this is reality. This is thirty feet, if we have it, we have easy access to expand more. But that's why we're requesting various from the chairman and the board and to cooperate. We are very good status city of Troy for years, I live and operate from city of Troy.
We acknowledge, you've been a great commercial resident neighbor in the city of Troy, there's no, no doubt about that, but is there anything specific to the right of way issue that Mr. Courtney and Mr. Bartnik have raised that you can provide?
I, I didn't, you talking about the front actually?
Yeah.
Yeah, ma, it's, it's if we have, and we're requesting six feet, this will not be issue if we have the thirty. So with, with the right of way we done, then we got, we got issue with this. So now, that's...
Okay, thank you. Paul, in this regard, is there any way, this does seem to be kind of a significant linchpin to the front variance if we were to approve it? Because it seems to be, two answers have been given, that it did, it does apply and it does not apply. Is there any way to get an answer to that tonight?
Could you, could you restate the question for...
Well, I guess, and perhaps maybe it's just my own confusion, but does, the, does the expansion of Rochester Road create a hardship? And I'm, I feel like I've heard two different answers. Yes, please.
Whenever there's a condemnation and the city acquires additional right of way, the city has to compensate the owner for that property. So in theory, the property owner has been compensated for whatever hardship would have already been caused by that acquisition.
So it's a moot point, then?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I think that aside from what caused the hardship, the hardship here is basically the expansion is, in order for the applicant to actually maintain his operation in the city of Troy, we must give him the granted, the variance. And that's the bottom line situation. What caused the, 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 the actual condition is actually his expansion and his need to expand. And the site constraint is there that he cannot without granting a variance. I'm ready to, I, I'd like to actually make a motion if I may, or I think that a motion is in order. And we, we spent an awful lot of time on this issue and on technical things that don't relate to whether or not we can grant it or not.
Well, Mr. Strat, I, I appreciate your, your input, but the petitioner has a right to, to make the information, the board has the right to ask the questions. Some of those questions, especially with the regulatory issues of record storage, do derive what he might need. However, there is a public comment period, we're gonna have to entertain, we can't possibly do that without that. But your, your information, your opinion is well founded, I appreciate it. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, a quick question. First, I appreciate the, the response you had on the hardship issue, that obviously something we would consider, and also appreciate your interest in reinvesting in existing property in the city. The other concern I have is the impact it's gonna have on your adjoining neighbors. Now, I'm glad to see you got some responses from the residences to the east of the property, and apparently you're working on a, an agreement with the gas station for parking. Did you say that you have a cross easement agreement with the property to the immediate north or not?
Correct. No, 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 we have, no, we, yes, we have a, an easement that was, that was granted that is of public record, and we have furnished it to Mr. Evans.
Is that just for the driveway that you both share there, then?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, all right. That's the only question I had.
Okay. Mr. Bartnik, at one point I thought you might have motioned you had a question, is that correct?
My question already has been answered.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Courtney?
Yes, I have one other question, but for the staff, not for the petitioner. We're talking about leasing parking spaces from the gas station. Does the gas station have sufficient parking spaces that they can lease?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, you can return to your seats and what we're going to do, do you have a comment to make?
I, I had a point of order to ask the chair, as, as to the correspondence that I have. I believe the chair indicated that you do not have.
It appears that we have some, but not all. I did receive some late, but I don't think I got it all, but could you give hard copies to Mr. Evans?
Should I give them?
That would be fine right now, yes.
That would be, I, I just wasn't sure how to...
No, 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 probably not all, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, the time we're gonna open up the public comment item, section of the meeting for item four A. I know some of you are here to speak upon that issue. What we would ask is that you would approach on an orderly basis, it's one at a time, and then just state your name and your address of where you live. There's no need to write anything down, because meetings are taped, so that's essentially our minutes. But if you would like to, then state briefly your opinion as to whether you're in support or against the variance as proposed, and very quickly, the reason why. So is there anyone here would like to speak on this matter? Ma'am?
My name is, excuse me, Sandra Osborne. I, the property to the north is held in trust by the Helen S. Kropchuk Trust, and I manage that property. And we own the entire driveway and the parking that is adjoining our building, okay? So at this time, we see that this accountant, four or five of his employees park in the space that he's proposing to build his addition. They double park their cars, there's a pod of four or five cars back there, so that they can leave spaces for their customers. And at this time, they also park in our spaces. So my question would be, the pressure on our building, we have three tenants, Abel's Own, Troy Chiropractic, and Check and Gold. The parking, it would add additional pressure as we own the entire driveway and our side of the parking lot. And that would be my concern, is that there wouldn't be enough parking because he's removing space from the back of his building and that at this time, they don't have enough parking. So that would be my concern. Also, that they've had a dumpster back there, and where would the trash go if he's increasing the size of his building? Where is the dumpster or whatever, the trash removal? That would be another issue that I would raise. So my concern is that we have, our, my tenants have a right to their parking spaces, and that would be my concern. I need to speak in defense of my tenants.
Okay, and from what you're saying is that your need for parking spaces is such that you would not be willing to enter an agreement to provide spaces?
Correct, no. We need them for our tenants and our customers.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, wait a minute, sometimes we have questions.
Sure.
Mr. Bartnik, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I did have a question.
Sure.
The statement has been made that there is a recorded easement pertaining to the use of the driveway. Do you agree with that?
Yes. Well, it is, it's, he has an easement or a right of way to use the driveway. And actually, another question that I have is, where would construction equipment and all of that material be placed? Because he couldn't use, we own everything from the driveway to the right, all the way over. We have forty-eight feet from the edge of our building over, and actually, his parking space is in fringe on our right of way.
Ma'am, it's kind of an answer, but a non-answer to your question, is that if, if he was allowed to have the variance, or whatever variances he might receive, when it goes through the planning commission and you see the architectural drawings for like the dumpster, the work plans as far as where they're gonna put their construction equipment, all those would have to be addressed in accordance with city quote code. So those issues will not be ignored, but right now, I know we cannot give you an answer. And it's actually outside of our, our mandate, but, but they would not be ignored, they would not be ignored by the city, no. Mr. Bartnik, is there a follow up question?
No, that was a thing.
Okay. Is there any question? Mr. Courtney?
I just would indicate that since the lease of three parking spaces at the gas station is going to be made available to him, I would assume that's where he would park his employees that are currently parking where you think there would be a problem.
At this time, yes, four or five people who park in the behind the building, so...
I've never seen more than one, but that's, I don't go there at all times, so, but anyway, he would have three spots on the other side, he'd only have to worry about two then.
Okay.
Is there anything else, ma'am?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak on this particular issue? Sir, please come forward.
My name is Robert Buck. I live in one of the single family houses just to the east at ten eighty-seven Winthrop. And so I'm next door to one of the ones that apparently were, were asked to write one of the letters.
Yes.
Yeah, with the coroner there. So my concern is, I, I, I'm not for or against, but I do have some concerns of how, how close this will make this building to the wall that forms the back border of my yard. And as we just heard, there's already dumpsters there and that sort of thing. I, I'm concerned that that's gonna be kind of piled up and, you know, rodents, whatevers can easily make it over to the, to the, the whole houses that, you know, are single family homes. So that's, that's something, I guess I'd like to know what were the plans for that area. In the rendering I saw, there's no green area there, it looks like it's just kind of a cement dead end alleyway now, and that's, doesn't really seem to fit in with what I've come to see in Troy.
One question, you had indicated you lived to the east, and the letter of support, were you the author of one of them?
No, no, I said, my neighbor apparently was asked to write a letter. I, I was one more house up, so nobody even contacted us.
Kitty corner, so to speak?
No, well, you could, well, I'm sorry, if you can, ten eighty-seven. So ten seventy-nine was one of the ones that was mentioned.
Yes.
Two houses north.
Yeah.
I see where you're going, okay.
His yard is two houses, quite a ways away.
Yeah, I mean, I can see the building from my backyard.
I don't think you do now.
Oh, I do.
You do?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, this expansion, well, yeah, but all this gonna do is add a little more of the Sonoco station, so I'm not, that's not a big issue for me. Again, I'm just more concerned about what's gonna go on that, that dead end alleyway, right? If it's gonna be dumpsters and that sort of thing, that's, that's not the best thing to have, next to a wall that separates a residential area.
Understood.
That's all.
Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak on this matter for or against? Sir?
My name is Tarek Gayar. I, I am the managing member of the Companions LLC. We own the Sonoco gas station, thirty-four-ten, right, adjacent to his project. And actually, we are in favor of this beautiful building that he presented to us. We renovated our building not long ago, and I believe by improving his building as well, that would be kind of compatible to what we have in the station, that would beautify the area a bit more. The building is not in the best shape or look right now as, as right next door to us. We wish to see a, a more beautiful building. We love the idea of the green roof that he has. It is something new, actually, and I didn't know about it before. In regards to the hardship that he is facing, I believe, we're witnessing that because some of his employees sometimes come to use our bathroom in the gas station, and he is really facing some hard time in the small facilities with the large staff number. So setback would not really bother us at all. We have the canopy, which is really visible enough from the road, north and south. In regards to the being a good neighbor, keeping the landscaping in place, he's been always a good keeper to that. Improving, spending the money to improve the building next door to us, actually, it's a better idea than just let him move to a different place.
So what you're saying is you, you think it'll improve the general area, improve the property in specific, complement yours, and you are in agreement to loan or lease spaces of parking?
That is something that has to be agreed from the whole LLC members. The managing member, yes, I have a say to it. I am not against it. member, yes, I have a say to it. I am not against it. I will actually vote for it, but it's not my final decision. He has to work the agreement in legal with, actually, the tenant has a lot of say as well, that is running the station right now.
Okay. Well...
But as a value to our property, this will enhance, actually, that will be better for the city of Troy. You will probably have a better assessment to the building, and you'll charge them more taxes in the near future.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Wait, hold on a minute. Is there any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you. Appreciate it, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Ma'am?
My name is Kathy Gargaliano, and I own Abel's Own, which is in the property in question, just north of 3424. I'm at 3456, so it's my parking lot on that side of the building that's in jeopardy here. I have four spots and two for handicapped individuals because my business is for handicapped people. So, we elected to give up one of our regular parking spots, to have handicapped parking. In the past, we've not had any problems sharing parking on those occasions when it needed to happen. We didn't have to put it in writing because it doesn't happen daily. As I see the plans for the new building at 3424, they have literally filled the property with building. So, there is no additional property to really do anything else. I do have a concern for being able to control the parking. And however we can do that, I'm happy to, you know, try and figure that out. But I see every day how many people go into the parking lot that work there, how many people go in and out as a result of the business. My business, I don't have a need for a great number of parking places because most of my clients don't drive. They are brought by another person. So, I'll have a lot of people, but only one car. Every once in a while, I'll have a class in there that will bring in a number of cars, but there is parking on the north side of the building. So, we have some that does belong to our management that we are allowed to use. So, I don't know that I can really agree with this kind of acceptance of the variance. It would seem that even if they made the building a little bit smaller so that they could accommodate the property, that might be a possibility. I can't say, all I know is that I can't control where my people park, so if there's an opening, that's where you park. And I think that that's the same for the people that come to 3424. So, we wouldn't have any control over, you know, where people park. And I would be a little bit afraid that I wouldn't have enough parking for my customers.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming forward. Again, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Does not, I do not see anybody, so I'm going to close the public comments section. I'm going to bring Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask of the staff. Is this going to be going before the Planning Commission for a site plan approval?
You know, it may be. I seem to recall the planning director indicating that it wasn't, but I can't remember the reason why.
Okay. The second question is that I just noticed that the drawings that have been submitted, there is no civil engineer, or there's not a survey. So, I'm questioning in my own mind as the legitimacy of all the documents that we have before us, because I'd rather see it have a civil engineer or a surveyor at least actually laying this out. And to me, I'm a little bit concerned about, based on the conversation I just heard as relates to the adjacent property owners. I don't see anything stating that it's an easement, but it should be recorded. And if it were a surveyor would have indicated that, would have researched that out, and it would be so documented on the site plan. So, I have some concern about this now as I see it, although I'm all for the expansion for the city, and anything that we can do to improve the quality of the city, I'm all for it. And I have that, but I still have reservations as relates to that now.
Mr. Stratt, I do have one question for you. And it touches on your background as an architect. I've done a fair amount of brownfield consulting, and mine's mostly been environmental-related in the tax funding side. But when you get into a green roof, it's my understanding that the structural loads is essentially planned to double what the roof could hold if it was not a green roof? The question I would ask is just is, and I know you don't have any design drawings of this building as such, but can this, is this even feasible, just in a rough sense, if you can speak to it in any way, to expand this building without essentially removing the existing building to build a suitable roof structure to hold a green roof?
Well, you're absolutely, you're right. The structure itself has to be beefed up for that, although it's all lightweight material that they use on her as much as possible. The soil is not the normal soil that normally is used, but that not only is the structural member, but it's the foundations and footings that are affected as well. So, you're absolutely right. I don't know without actually looking at the documents, but I would doubt very much that it is designed for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Paul, a question for you. You had indicated that it was maybe not going before the Planning Commission for a reason. Do you know what that reason was?
I can't remember.
Okay. No problem. It's a good answer. It's, that's just what it is.
Certainly, if the ordinance has provisions for administrative site plan review, that still means they have to meet every aspect of the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So, either way, whatever the zoning ordinance requires in regards to things like green space, parking, et cetera, they're still going to have to meet those. But I just can't remember the reason why that seems to be prominent in my memory.
Okay. No problem at all. Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, the reason why I asked that question as relates to that is that the parking requirements is based on the square footage or the actual use. And that's why, you know, the requirements that are made right now, I have some concern on that, based on that. And obviously, that's something that they have to present if they are coming in for a site plan approval. And that's not a part of our jurisdiction here, as it is a part of the Planning Commission jurisdiction. And that's why I was asking that question.
And one thing I would like to say is that shared parking is permitted by the ordinance, and based on the amount of shared parking they're proposing with the neighbor, plus what they're proposing now, they actually exceed the number of required spaces by one.
Oh, it has been calculated out that it is in accordance with the zoning ordinance as relates to the parking?
Yes.
Therefore, the comments that were made as far as the amount of parking spaces that they have is adequate, is what you're telling me?
Well, what I can say is that the minimum required number of parking spaces by ordinance appears to have been met. If the actual use of the property is different, there's not necessarily a lawful requirement that they provide more.
I understand. Thank you.
And, thank you. Mr. Courtney?
Yes. You say they've been met, that's including the three spaces from the gas station?
Yeah, I thought it was four from the gas station. That would include it, yes.
But since the agreement hasn't been signed, then at this point, that's assuming that's signed. If it isn't signed, now what do we do?
Well, if this goes through as proposed, one of those requirements is, is that agreement's going to have to be signed. If it's not signed, the city cannot give final approval to this proposal.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or discussion questions from the board at this time? Mr. Bartnik?
I would make a motion to approve the variance. And I would refer to the standards under Section 15.04 E2, that all items A through E are established by the evidence that's in the record here so far today, as well as in this initial submission. Although not required, I would point out that it is, the existing building is only 1,270 square feet. There's only one lavatory there. Clearly, the property is insufficient size existing to carry on commercial operations for this allowed use, or probably any other use, but certainly the owner's allowed use. I'd also point out, there is an existing masonry wall at the rear, and all the other evidence here indicates to me that the variance request should be granted. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartnik. Is there a second for the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would second the motion.
Okay. We do have a second. I'd like to open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion from the board on the matter?
Actually, I have one question, if you would, or perhaps a proposed amendment to your motion, Mr. Bartnik. And I don't know if I have the right to do this, but for whatever the reason was, this property did not appear to need to go through the Planning Commission. Would you accept an amendment, if I can add it, to the extent that we would request that, whether it was, quote, "needed" or not, for the purposes of design, final design approval, that this motion be contingent, or this approval be contingent, that it does go through the Planning Commission?
I don't think that's a necessary part of the motion. I would not be making that amendment.
No.
I think the drawings, everything that's been submitted, you know, meets the minimum requirements for the variance request under the zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right.
So, that's my logic.
Okay. Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I just noticed here that they are adding, the required parking is 6.4 in accordance with the method that they tabulated this. And I notice here, the provided is eight parking spaces, so that they are increasing the number of parking spaces from what it used to be. So, therefore, I stand corrected as it relates to going before the Planning Commission, because I see that they do meet that parking, and it is an increase.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just one final note. The calculation is actually based on the old parking standard. The new parking standard is more lenient, so...
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any additional comments on the motion that's in front of us? Mr. Clark?
Just a comment on the number of parking spaces. If I take the picture out right now and count the parking spaces, they've got eight parking spaces right now. So, that's not an increase from six.
Yeah.
You're right. But that has nothing, nothing to do...
Right, right. Mr. Clark, any comments regarding the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just thank you. I would just point out to you that if you were inclined to make an amendment to the act of motion before us, you have the right to do that. You don't have to ask anyone's permission. That would be considered a hostile amendment, but you should feel free to move forward. I think that may have...
Your only reason why I brought that up is because I wasn't sure if I could actually, we could end up creating something in which we're directing the planning, the commission to do something that they normally wouldn't do. And that was where I felt I was crossing the line.
I completely understand.
But as it turns out from his, Mr. Bartnik's logic, I wouldn't in the end formally make the amendment, so. So, we have, we have an amendment to, we have a motion to prove the petition. We have it seconded. We are in the middle of discussion. Is there any additional comment before I ask for the roll call? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, can you, can you call the roll?
Mr. Courtney?
Very reluctant, yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bertnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
You have your approval to move forward, and we wish you luck with your business and your renovations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to Agenda Item 4B, it's a variance request for 3820 Victoria Court. Paul, could you give us a briefing on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property located at 3820 Victoria Court is in a residential area south of Waddles Road and west of John R. In the overhead, it is the property outlined in red. The property is zoned single-family residential, as indicated in yellow on this zoning map, and all surrounding property carries an identical zoning classification. The subject matter involves a two-step process for what the applicant eventually wants to do. They want to split a portion of the existing property off, so it fronts Latimer, then build a house on the property. Now, the first part of that, splitting the property off, doesn't really involve any action by this board. This green line here, this dash line indicates where the split line would be. So, the resulting parcel would be this large rectangle here. You know, this isn't very clear, but this is the rendition of the parcel. If, you know, if this goes through tonight, they're going to split it to look like this. And what I've done is I've circled the area that the board is going to consider tonight. And what that is, is the area adjacent to and just east of Latimer Drive. Now, this is a close-up of where they want to put the house on the property. And this gray area is the proposed single-family house they want to put on the proposed property to be split. Now, the way the property configuration with the split would be laid out is this line going up and down would be considered the front property line because it borders Latimer Drive. The ordinance stipulates that the line opposite the front property line, or this one to the right of the drawing with the R by it, is the rear property line, and all other property lines are side property lines. Now, the ordinance requires that if somebody were to build a house here, you've got to have a setback from the front property line of 30 feet, and they're proposing a setback of just over 13 feet. So, they need a variance to that. The ordinance also requires that the rear setback has to be at least 40 feet. They're proposing a setback of just over 13 feet. So, for their proposal to go through as planned, they're going to need two variances, two setback variances from this board tonight.
Thank you. Question of information, or...
If, if they actually extended the road across, then the front, the front and rear lines would now be sidelines, and they would, they would fit the ordinance then, wouldn't they?
Actually, they would, yeah. And how about if I just draw, based on that, just to illustrate for everyone here. If we were to extend Latimer, the line I just drew would be the front property line.
Okay. So, what we're really doing is saying they don't have to build Latimer, or they do?
Well, there's no requirement that they build Latimer.
No, I meant if, if we didn't give a variance, in effect, they would have to build Latimer to build the same house at the same location.
That could be one accurate way to interpret it, yes.
Yeah. Which would be kind of ridiculous, I, personal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Thank you for the briefing, Paul. Is the applicant here? Would you please come forward? We'll need you to state your name and where you currently reside, and then you're free to make a presentation as to why you are making the request, and any information you want to provide to support.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Fleming. This is my wife, Nikki. We currently reside at 3820 Victoria Court. We are here seeking a variance. I am not a lawyer. I talk to Paul, and I, forgive me if I stumble, I don't use big words. I'm a pretty simple guy. I sell print and promotional products. So, my wife, Nikki, and I, well, I bought a house in Shelby Township, and we decided to move back. I tried to buy a foreclosure. Long story short, it didn't go through. We are in a position to possibly get some land needed to us, and actually build a home behind my father. And we approached Mr. Evans with this issue, and he's been very, very helpful. So, Paul, I appreciate that. And we kind of talked through it, how we would be able to put a home on that property with basically extending our driveway off the end of Latimer Drive. And that is what the plot plans that we had drawn represents. Our hardship is for us to build a home that's desirable for us to start a family in Troy, we would need those setbacks very much so. A sketch, Mr. Evans, I'm not sure if this is included in...
I can bring this up on the screen for you.
Thank you. Without the variance, granted, we would be building a home that is 27-foot wide, that is indicated on the drawing. And that really isn't, if the right word would be, in line with the other homes on Latimer. I know, I'm aware, I believe there are 27-foot wide homes in Troy. I understand that. But in that particular subdivision, the house that we'd be building right next to 1826, Kate and Simon, which Kate is here this evening, their home is much wider. So, to build a home that we felt would fit in with the current subdivision that I grew up in, and I would love to live in, it's the kind of home you give your neighbor a key to your house. The pun intended being that my neighbor would be my father, but the other neighbors have a key anyway. So, it's a close, tight-knit neighborhood. I did ask Paul what could I do to possibly would help my case in getting, obtaining a variance this evening. And, you know, with getting all the neighborhood to come to a meeting, he asked us to get signatures, and I believe you have those in your packet as well. We tried to get to every home, people that... We tried to get to every home, people that we knew in the subdivision, and people were very excited. They were inviting us into their home, looking at our plans, and pretty excited for us. So if you have any questions, my wife and I'd be happy to answer them the best we could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicants? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you. Thinking two steps ahead, and I'm not certain... I'm not certain that the question's directed to you or to the city, but I'll ask the question. Is it possible, then, does putting in this house here prevent splitting the lot immediately to the north of the proposed house, to the north of the proposed Latimer driveway? All right, yeah, right, if you... Yeah, right there. North of Latimer Street, Parcel B, well, it's called Parcel B there. There are two lines there. Would the owner of that property still be permitted to split that lot further to put a house on that northernmost part of the land? Do you know? Does anybody know?
I am not the current property owner.
Are you...
This is all...
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans and I were talking about the way this would be done, is if the variance was granted, we would move forward in splitting the property appropriately for the home to be built in the south side of Latimer location.
Okay.
I don't know if...
It just appears to me that there's enough room for another house to be constructed immediately north there.
Oh, on Parcel B? Correct.
Parcel B is not part of our... I don't know if that...
Oh, is it?
Parcel B is not... Our property line ends just below Parcel B.
All right.
Okay.
Right, Parcel B is, I believe, the property on Waddles Road. Yes, it looks to be 1830 Waddles, extrapolating the line, the property line at 1825 all the way over.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Then my question then would be, south of Parcel B, right next to 18...
30.
1825?
Yes.
Right next to 1825 Latimer?
This area here?
Right. Is there still sufficient room there? We're not cutting off the property owner's right to put another parcel, do another split and put a home there, are we? This home is going to go next to 1826, correct?
Yes.
And is there going to be a... Do we know, is there going to be a split?
I'm not aware of one. I don't know if the applicant's proposing to cut another piece off. I can say that consideration would have to be made to have proper frontage along Latimer, but perhaps the applicant can... Because it is going to be his property, this portion all the way down, maybe he can better address his future plans for that.
I just don't want to be in a situation where we're preventing the property owner from doing a split, and maybe that's the property owner's concern, not ours, but there's three or four pieces of property there that potentially could be used for another houses.
Sir, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Currently, at this time, we're looking to build one home. That field is where our little buddies play baseball currently.
But that "field," quote, you own, right?
Correct.
Okay. Would you be...
Will own.
Will own, right. I understand. No problem, thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Obviously, and I think the petitioner just answered the question, but I assume that because the Flemings own that property next to 1825, if they wanted to try to build another home in there, that would be up to them, and if they met city code, I would assume that would be what they would intend to do. But it sounds more like they want that as a nice, big, green area, so...
So not to put words in your mouth, but you understand the limitations that this might trigger?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Strat, did you have a question? No? I wasn't sure in here. Mr. Bartnik? Okay. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the actual existing property owner is here, and I think maybe he has something to say, Councilman Fleming, which I see is on the application here, so maybe during their presentation, he could add a few words regarding that.
Mr. Fleming, do you... Councilman Fleming, or do you have something you'd like to add?
Excuse me, Mr. Neal. I'm property owner Fleming tonight. Left that council back at home. Never represent the council unless I'm sitting there, so I'm speaking as a property owner. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak. What I've agreed with Mark and Nikki, my son and daughter-in-law, is contingent upon them getting approval to build a house in this orientation. I'm going to deed them the property. We haven't determined the property line. I'll work with the city assessor, whatever, to do that in the most expedition and efficient way. I could deed them the whole thing. I could deed them, draw a property line down the middle of Latimer, which might be more feasible, but at this point, that's open right now. I'm just looking... They're just looking to get that site approved. We don't have any plans at this point for the future, but we might take that into consideration when we're doing the property split, so we don't preclude putting a house on that side.
Okay, thank you.
But the main thing is, I think all the residents on that street do not want that street extended, and I think that's the gist of the petition that was signed.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any additional questions from the board to the petitioners? Mr. Courtney, did you? No, okay. Well, seeing none, we appreciate you coming forward, and now we're going to go ahead with public comment, and we may call you back if there's some questions, but maybe not. But thank you.
I'll be answering. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody from a public comment perspective that would like to speak on this matter? So, ma'am, please remember to state your name, where you live, and feel free to let us know whether you support or oppose the application.
My name is Caterina Pieri. I'm the owner of Latimer Drive, 1826, so also referred as Lot 26. So I'm the closest neighbor to the project that's proposed, and I approve this variant, and I believe it's going to be a beautiful building that would add... that will add beauty to our street, and I also believe it's going to be the only option for this beautiful family to use their property in a sensible way. So I approve, and I can also... I think I speak in name of all the neighbors on Latimer who signed the petition, and so we approve.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for the speaker? No? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this, sir?
Hello? I'm Martin Sicalean. I live at 3778 Victoria Drive, and Mark has been a good friend of mine, and I'm friends with Mr. Wade Fleming. But anyways, I'm in agreement with this project, mostly because he is setting the house up by the design of the subdivision. He's not... He's trying to keep the character as it is. And furthermore, the extension, the way it's drawn, we don't have to have the extending the road out to Deloitte, which would increase traffic, and we have a lot of young kids in the neighborhood, and of course, he'll be having a family of his own, and to have more traffic with an extension of that road is... would be against what we would want. But as drawn, it totally fits the character of the sub, so I'm in agreement with it.
Is there any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, sir? Oh, sorry. We'll get to you next, sir. Thank you. Oh, you're fine, sir. You're fine. You're... Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Good evening, gentlemen. I, James Keller, I represent the homeowner at 1830 and 1840 Waddles. That is the property to the north and to the east of the proposed split. There are a number of concerns we have with this, and Mr. Courtney characterized the idea of having to extend the street as ridiculous. What an extension of the street brings to the party is adequate sewer for drainage. The property that my client owns is about a foot and a half lower than the property on which the building is going to be constructed, and the paving of that large circle drive is going to cause significant water runoff, presumably because gravity is still in effect, to the east onto my client's property, which is already considerably wet in the spring. So this is going to come at a cost to my client because there will not be adequate drainage, because there will not be sewers installed. The road going through to Deloitte is not an issue because Latimer would stop at the eastern end of that property. You know, it's funny, we make rules in building subdivisions for orderly construction of this, and any person developing this property previously would have had to comply with those rules. There have been some attempts in the past to modify the rules in order to develop the longer, narrow properties, and interestingly enough, the petitioner in this case has been one of the more active voices in opposing granting variances for the development of those properties. So there is a sense of what's sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander.
I'm not sure that that's really necessary. Actually, what I would like you to speak to is why you oppose it and not a comment.
Well, it's going to create a hardship on my client's property by introducing water runoff. It's going to create a property that is directly adjacent to his property with elevations of 25 feet or higher that's going to cast, you know, evening shadows on his property. It's going to affect his ability to develop his property in the same way. I don't know whether the... You know, it's very nice that he wants to live in the neighborhood, but okay, let's comply with the rules. Let the street... Stretch the street so you get drainage and you get those utilities so that you're not creating a problem for your neighbor next door by depriving, you know, by making their property wetter and less light in the evening. So... And Latimer still wouldn't go through, so there's not going to be people racing up and down that street.
Okay. Appreciate it. Just a minute, sir. Is there any... Sir, sometimes we have questions. Mr. Courtney has a question for you.
I have a question. How is his house going to throw a shadow that far from his house?
He's going to be 13 feet from the lot line.
He's going to be how many feet away from the house at 1830?
Well...
He's not going to cast a shadow unless he builds a 30-story building, and I don't think we'll give him that much variance.
I look at the drawings. I'm seeing a height of well in excess of 25.
Yeah, and I'm seeing a hell of a long way for a shadow to be cast to Waddles.
Anytime the sun goes below... Goes beyond 30 degrees of vertical, you're going to have a shadow onto my client's property that's going to remain there for the rest of the afternoon. So that property, if it is developed off of Deloitte, will be in shadow. And it will be... It will be... Have a significant increase in the drainage problem because of the change in elevation.
It's what you're stating that's your opinion, not that it will.
Well, when I last checked, Mr. Neal...
I know you checked. You did gravity...
Water runs downhill.
I know. Gravity stone effects, or not such. But the tone of your... I have to say, the tone of your presentation with me is not doing your clients any good.
Well, we're trying to express the objection as best we can.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. But I'd just let you know that you're presenting it in quite an interesting tone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Keller, you said that... I believe you said that you didn't think Latimer would ever be carried through all the way to Deloitte.
Well, certainly wouldn't be carried through as a result of the construction of that house to create the frontage so that we would have the side lot variances.
Okay, as of right now, it wouldn't be, but the potential, assuming the city still has that easement there, is potentially, I would assume, city staff can answer that's better than those of us here, but if the easement for that street still exists there, a developer could still come in there and extend that street through, couldn't they?
Yeah, but these maps would indicate if an easement was present.
Okay.
And really, actually, what they would indicate is if the right of way was there, but just undeveloped.
Mr. Strat?
Yeah, as far as the extent of the water runoff, as you said, runs downhill, engineering department and the building department will be overviewing and reviewing all the documents on it, and they will not allow that to happen. I can tell you that, and if you have concern or your client has concern about it, make sure that he contacts the building department and engineering department. Other than that, I mean, this is just typical. Everybody wants to protect their rights, and I agree with what you're saying, but as a safeguard, engineering will take care of that.
Are there any additional questions for the speaker?
If I may address that.
No, you can, actually, and you haven't been recognized, but you will in a moment, sir. Are there any additional... None? Okay. I appreciate your presentation, sir. Before I recognize you, sir... No, that's okay. There's another gentleman who is waiting.
Well, that actually is my client.
Oh, okay.
So...
Well, I know, but just coming up and not announcing who he is and such is not how I run meetings.
All right.
Just a minute, sir. I'll let you come up. I will let you come up, but there was another gentleman waiting in the public comment period. Sir, would you like to come forward?